Okay, good evening, everyone. It's four o'clock, and I want to welcome you to the June 8th, 2023 meeting of the Baltimore County Planning Board. It is now called to order. My name is Nancy Hafford. I'm the Chair of the Board, and we will now start the meeting with a roll call. Mr. Array.
Here.
Ms. Brophy.
Here.
Ms. German.
Here.
Mr. Hafer. Mr. Heckman.
Here.
Mr. Heinel.
Here.
Mr. Hinton. Mr. Halipka.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. McGuinness.
Here.
Mr. Pirlo.
Oh, he's here. He's on the phone.
On the phone.
Yeah.
Let the notes reflect. Ms. Panero. Mr. Warren.
Here.
Ms. Wolfson.
Here.
Now, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I think we have our microphone situations fixed this week. Thank you very much. That's good news. Ms. Bensley, are there any changes to the tentative agendas published?
No changes, Madam Chair.
Okay, tonight, the Planning Board is meeting in a work session to further deliberate on the Master Plan 2030. This item was first introduced to the Board May 4th, 2023, and a virtual public hearing was conducted on May 18th, 2023. On June 1st, 2023, the Board began deliberation and will continue tonight. I would now like to turn things over to the Department of Planning for additional comments and information, the Board sequestered issues. Mr. Lafferty?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of items. First is really not related to the Master Plan, but last Monday, the County Council, at the request of the Administration, introduced legislation that enables the County Executive to compensate members of the Planning Board. This came initially as a result of legislation introduced in April as part of an employment and executives' compensation package, and part of that was to compensate members of the fairly recently appointed Police Accountability Board. The Council rejected that request at the time and thereafter requested an evaluation and a benchmarking, looking at what other jurisdictions are doing for boards and commissions that they have under their domain. What that led to is a recognition that Baltimore County is on par with almost every other jurisdiction of our size, when you think about Frederick Howard, Hartford, Anne Rundle, regarding most of the boards and commissions. And the one that is not is the Planning Board. Most other jurisdictions compensate the Planning Board. So, the bill was introduced, it's Bill 37-23, which enables the County Executive to provide compensation for the Planning Board. The bill also spells out that should compensation be provided, it would be $15,000 per member, $20,000 for the Chair. The money is in this year, this coming year's operating budget, and so should, the County Executive's already made the commitment that should the legislation pass when it goes to the Council, which will be, it was introduced this past session, so it would be July 3rd, that money would be available for this compensation. Unfortunately, I don't know what the implication is for the financial disclosures. I'm sure there is some, and whether that has any impact on the decision that any of you are not going forward. So, I didn't want you to hear about it in the paper, not know it was coming. I'm not sure how many of you are even aware the bill had been introduced, but the County Executive takes very seriously the work the Planning Board does, and it was at the, excuse me, at the initial meeting when, actually, it was Chairman Jones who asked about the Planning Board specifically, and suggested that look at compensation for the Board, knowing what other jurisdictions do. Now, we're not Montgomery County, so the Chair won't get paid $220,000, but, "Darn," she says.
A quick change.
Unfortunately not.
Wait, what are you doing before it? That means everybody has to show up. That hair for Jim would have it just completely.
So, I think again, as a reflection, recognition of work that the Board is, has engaged in, would be expected to engage in going forward. It'll be led by the Administration, Chief Administrative Officer Stacy Rogers will be carrying this forward to the Council. Their work session actually would be next, I believe, next week. So, or maybe it's not till the end of June, June 25th, excuse me. So, I don't know if anybody has any questions about The other two things I'll, I mean, on Madam Chair is that two questions were posed for us to look into or research, and we did. I want to thank Taylor and Courtney, as well as people in the County Executive's Office. Anne Rundle County has had four comprehensive zonings since 1972. The last was in 2011, so that, and they've just started a new one this year, so that's 12 years without a comprehensive plan, without renewing the comprehensive plan. Baltimore City has what they call a six-year strategy. Carroll County does its comprehensive plan, excuse me, it's, I say comprehensive plan, this is, I'm talking about CZMP, the Comprehensive Zoning Process, I'm sorry, Comprehensive Zoning Process in Anne Rundle went 12 years without rezoning. Baltimore City looks at it every six years. Carroll County is every six years. Frederick County does it in conjunction with small-area plans. They don't have a routine or regular cycle. Hartford, as Mr. Pirlo pointed out before, is every eight years, and in Howard County, it's approximately every 10 years. So, our cycle is very different than anybody else's. We also had a meeting with the County Attorney, and she is, one of the County Attorneys, and she has indicated that there is no set format in which the Master Plan or Comprehensive Plan has to be presented. I just wanted to We do have cycle zoning here in the county as well. It is basically put on hold during the Comprehensive Zoning Process, but it also, it is specified in the code. My understanding, and I'm not exactly sure, but I think the standards are mistaken or changed, so there's a fairly high bar for actually seeking a change, even in the established cycle. And I'm not sure if in Baltimore City they have a different standard, you know, from.
And we, we cut them off because of time. We really cut them off.
And our board.
So, I know that we asked you to have some meetings with Ms. Nugent, not Ms. Nugent, Ms. Meechum, and I think you've done that?
Yes.
And so, do you want to report on that?
Sure. No, I had a good Zoom call with Ms.
Meechum.
Meechum, and, sorry, now you've got me doing, and a couple of the other planning staff. They were able to answer, you know, a great many of my questions that I had sort of laid out. One of the issues, one of the things I couldn't wrap my head around was this idea of what was the sort of unit, and I'm used to thinking in terms of census tracts or some unit like that, and I couldn't quite figure out how they were assigning numbers to anything. And what was explained is, you got to think of this in terms of a map, that you're taking a map and you're taking some, you know, you're going to overlay census tracts, and so you've got one set of boundaries, and then you're going to overlay another set. And every time you do that, you're sort of slicing these boundaries into smaller and smaller, or different segments. Some of them can be large, some of them can be smaller, but I think what we said was like, they're like, when you, when they did that with all of their criteria, you wound up with like 9,000 polygons or so across the county. So, every one of those polygons then has a score attached to it based on the ranking that, you know, that they discussed for that overlay. And so, the overlay may go over several polygons, but, you know, each polygon will get that score. That then gets added together to create the initial scores. The next step was, you know, you now have these 9,000 polygons across the county, was to sort of sort them into smaller, a smaller number.
Wait, sorry, quick question. So, the polygons, you're trying to, like, the place type map?
It's what the place type map is based off of.
Like those, those number scores?
Yeah, yeah. So, you start with those, and like I said, those could be of different sizes with different populations. And those scores, I think, range, I think theoretically they could go up to 70-something, but in practice, it was like 40-somethings. And, you know, there's, they, you know, they were showing me, it's got a pretty normal, somewhat skewed distribution. So then the question is, where do you divide? And to do that, they use a type of cluster analysis. Now, the challenge with any of the cluster analyses, and I've done my fair share, is you have to tell it how many clusters you want. You often test to see, do you want 10, do you want five, and what sort of fits well? And so that's what they did. They did a somewhat iterative process, and they came up with some cluster scores. And, you know, and those were the scores that then led to the place map that they had. So, in terms of the underlying metrics, and it sounds like that was sort of based off of just, you know, the current planning field doctrine, I think I'm saying that right now, in terms of what kinds of, of things are important, and also to try and identify, and I think one of the big things, and I'm sure this will be a sort of point of discussion, is to what degree are we trying to identify where any change can occur versus to what degree are we trying to identify where we would like to recommend growth to occur? Those aren't the same thing. You know, you can recommend certain places, but still allow it elsewhere, which is how I'm now understanding the process. And so, given all that, you know, you then come up with these various scores. And, you know, they were talking about, I guess, one of the clusters, one of the ways that they did the cluster, and I think, Jen, you said the only place that popped out was Towson. Well, that's clearly not a good, good enough. If the only place you're going to recommend is just this area. So, they had to play around with that. So, yeah, so I think they were able to, to address a lot of the questions and issues I had, so I don't have any problems there. I did see the more recent email from the Venable people this came from, and I saw that they had some questions about some of the scoring, whether the scoring was done consistently, and, you know, whether there were, and as a result, whether there were polygons in essence that should have been identified that weren't. I had not gotten into that level of detail, so I don't have an answer to that. Certainly seems like a valid question, but, but in terms of the questions that I had posed, I thought that we, we had a good conversation, and I thought they addressed some to my satisfaction.
Thank you, Mr. Halipka. And now, what is that?
I was just going to ask a couple of questions.
Sure.
That's what she's way higher than mine, but I also spend a fair, probably an important amount of time looking at this, and that specifically, that I care more about, more about socioeconomic issues.
Mm-hmm.
Or whatever it was, where, did you have any, or any discussions about the data used? So, the data I see, that I can find, seemed to be used from 2010, in some cases, or do data from day?
I don't think there was anything that, I mean, I, you know, so for example, I think like the census tract boundaries would be the 2010 boundary, but that's just because that's where most of the data is right now.
We did, we took some, there was one layer that used, that was, that layer wasn't through the class, it was through the, they tied that to, to, that now, it does identify more than just census data, but also, like, time, spots, and other types of information, but we can really change that, because it's how.
The challenge I had with that is what happened in 2012. You went through a great session and apparently, so that data would be skewed a lot of the time.
Well, it used to use a lot of census data, and analysis, not just specific to the transportation data, and, and, and just like land use data, and, and, as a new category that we used for President Singh, where it was all to the minority majority census town, so that it was, the data that we used was the, the ACS data, which is a national data, so not just flat, just a census.
Because I, I had some people overlay the minority data, the path was dramatic.
You can use different styles, so I think for the percent, you can use just a category of 100% or higher, whereas, you can use a 90% or 100%. And I, I, we said over 50%, I already had 35% that's a good one, right? And that would be, you can, 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 on the senior population, we select, we, 26, 30% and several of them, so it would be 30% reaching, that's like a census town, 70% of the, we were trying to show against our theory, um, to do, kind of, because, and, 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 higher, higher concentrations of certain, of, yes, high, we, we, we.
And I appreciate that, and again, masters in marketing, so statistics, I spend a lot of time on, on, but I don't do it, as you guys do, but I do care about how it affects. A lot of people don't understand when they're looking at statistics, they're looking at median household income, for example, how that's skewed one way or another by outliers. So, you know, 90% calculations, and that, 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 80%, so they'd be looking at the curve.
Well, that would be true for the mean, not the median.
The, the median, yeah. So, we're, we're looking at data that used median household incomes and used social, these, I would call predominantly minority areas of around $75,000, and the new data shows around $101,000. So, it kind of pays back into the data that I'm looking at, it relates to, it relates to, and I'm about, I'm going to pass that, I'm going to, I'm going to, today, to the group that shows that nationally, and I'll show, I'll do the local, that nationally, there's only about 39% of the houses on the market for sale have a household, or have a market price lower than $341,000. So, if you look at the average household income, that's important. So, for that number, you have that house, that, 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 so I looked at local data, I could only get local data, I'll pass this on to you, but the average price of a home in Baltimore County, the listed price, the, 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 so if our household, average household income is $100,000, the average person, from the income standpoint, again, that's skewed either way, we'll, we'll better go with explaining that, but it's skewed by, you know, my household income is $400,000, so I skew that after, the value, when they're pushing it up. So, so it'd be a large, it's a number of people that put in my house, that have, so, it'd be a large portion of, 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 I also looked at rental rates in the county, and rental rates that pay, I compared our counties, I know a lot of people talk about the counties around us, where people, too, so I got some data to show rental rates, the average rental rate of a 706-foot apartment, which is, it's a one vector.
It's a one vector.
So, a very small, small, the, the average rate by town in the county, which I'll, I'll pass out to everyone, is probably around, depending on where in the county, about 15 to 16,000 for that dwelling. The lowest is Baltimore Highlands at $1,288, and Essex at $1,212. So, again, these are average numbers, so if you have a lot of amenities, I could screw that. So, I just wanted to say, what does that mean to that person? So, if a person makes $20 an hour, they're going to have a household income of $41,600. If I apply the base taxes, which are just Social Security, Medicare, and the minimum tax, which is 10%, their take-home income is around $2,600, so, you know, nearly, in, in most jurisdictions in the county, the 50% of their base, their, their take-home, so, these are really, like, this is, so I, I appreciate all the effort you guys put into it, it's amazing what you guys have done, it's a kind of work, but I think as a Board, we need to understand what this means to the average, if you don't, if you don't look at that, I have a map here that shows the real breakdown of the minority tracks, who, in our, our county. If you take the areas north of the county, the average household income is 30% higher, because there is, there's certain, because, you can't, and I know it's a historic problem, so it's not, it's not, it didn't be created, it was generations in our country, and especially in our county, but to continue to socially, economically, sacredly, or, causes crime issues, education issues, causes some social issues. So, I, you know, I'm going to pass the data out that I got, it was really, it's, 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 it's really, like, it's not just a, it's not just a percentage of it, which really, this really, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Now, Ms. Mantey and Ms. Meechum, if you want to review the
So, we sent an updated copy of the chart that we used last time, and again, it's just to try to help you work through any, any recommendations or changes you want to make as far as your vote next week. I can go through it. I think a lot of it, we've already discussed, and a lot of, there were a couple pages just for Planning Board Member Halipka, so I don't need to go through those. I think we've indicated that they're good.
Yeah, you don't have to.
So, I'll just note through here. So, there was a recommendation by Ms. Panero to make some changes. So, I've noted here on the chart that we've made those proposed changes. Again, it's up to you to decide whether you like them or not. We're just trying to help you along, so you don't have to stick with it or not, but they're in the Word document. So, if you wanted to see where in the content that change would fall and how it would fall, it's just given to you as something just to look at, so you can see a little bit easier. So, there was a note here about a statement in the Growth Framework 4, and so, we've added that in here, where it talks about adding some language about Section 324102A. So, that is in this as well. Let's see what page that's on. So, we've added that in. The second one was, there was a note about some of the definitions that we cited in the commonly-used terms. We've gone in and made some possible edits to that, and so you've been given a copy of an updated copy of that, if you want to look at those, so you can see if you feel that that's sufficient, or if that needs to be looked at again in some other way. The next one was a comment by Pirlo and Warren about the online format. It really was a comment, so there's no change there. Yes.
The challenge that happens, that, 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 sometimes it doesn't go anywhere. So, people will lie or something, so.
What do you mean when, when you say doesn't go anywhere, Mr. Warren? What do you?
No, I, I've had that issue before, too. I mean, I, I noted that on here as well the next time, I just said, certain things would load, and I know, you know, and Taylor and the staff were great responding, but some of the framework needed, I think it's the ones with the, the, apps on it, they're a really, kind of, or they just freeze, and you kind of have to keep coming back out and going back in, and I'm not sure it will overload. I think I bet, I think I might have had the hardest time with the Growth Framework, and the other ones loaded a little faster. I'm not sure if the Growth Framework had the most. But, I mean, I, I had some issues with doing that, too. And, I mean, I, if I go back out and come back in, eventually I get into it, there is a couple of stuff.
It does take a while, but, yeah, I got some of these to, to, so, some of the, the framework, okay, so.
So, the next piece was in the Vision Framework, on page 2 on the chart. There was a suggestion that staff had made at the last meeting to make an, a revision to add the words "and housing" to Goal 1, Action 1, and so that's indicated there in the Word document. There were no additional changes that we proposed as far as the next few comments, which came from Planning Board Member Brophy. We did address Liverpool Belt Environment, a new goal, 2.9, to add some language about creating and implementing a range of incentives to support and increase attainable housing inside the Erdle. So, we've written a sample for what that could look like, if that's, you know, meets what you're looking for. In the Growth Framework, the next piece was another staff recommendation, where we changed some language from "will likely continue" to "is permitted," and "outside these areas will continue based on the market" to that one. Let's see what else. Place types, Growth Framework 5, ad language, at the beginning of Growth Framework 5, clarifying the purpose of the core retrofit areas. We have illustrated what that could look like if there was an amendment to that, adding the information that was provided by Planning Board Member Panero. Let's see, same for the next one, revise the definitions in GF5 of established The only change that we made, it was suggested that industrial be added into the primary land use. And we did not feel on our part that that fit in the existing, I'm sorry, the established or the connected neighborhood. So that was the only difference from what was proposed as to what is shown there. There's another comment right after that, that if there are changes to the place types, that the images and the PDF of the overview would change. And of course, if those changes, we would make those edits to those images as well. The next one is place types, growth framework five revised as noted. There was a staff recommendation to add some language about University of Maryland Baltimore County into the special uses section. And so we've drafted what, what that could look like if that was something that you agreed with and wanted to add. The next one is a little language tweak that came from Planning Board Member Heckman into the established neighborhoods, which was to add, after single family homes, add and small scale commercial and to strike that will remain as such for the foreseeable future. And so that was kind of covered in the edits that we made by Planning Board Member Panero earlier. So because one canceled out the other, if you want us to reword that in some way, that would need to come from, from you. But you know, you would have to decide that. Let's see. And then the next pieces were the sections about the land use processes related to the comprehensive zoning map process. We did not propose language for that. You know, we put forth what we think is the best policy. And if you decide as a board you want to revise that, you know, we'll have to work to get that language together. The rest look like mostly comments we've already covered as far as general discussion. We did have an item that was added by Planning Board Member Holupka at the last one, requesting that a new process to review the Erdle on a regular basis be added. We did not add that information, but if it's something you want to propose, obviously you can, you do that. But I did want to note that in this, that we have a comprehensive list of everything that's come up. Same, the same, our same approach to the recommendation for some changes to the development process and growth framework seven that came from Planning Board Member Panero. That would be up to the board to maybe suggest some recommendations for that one. And I think the rest of it is, like I said, mostly questions that Council, our Planning Board Member Holupka came up with or that we've addressed already in other ways.
Okay, do you need questions or comments from the board right now?
I spent some time actually reading, reading through it. About averages. I can't find that at all.
It's in there. It's in the, they're getting a phone.
If I may at least, in the contemporaneous framework, Mr. Warren, the county has hired a, basically a agricultural development specialist. In the most recent budget that the council adopted, they actually added positions in economic development to help stand up more aggressive, I always use the word aggressive, focus on agriculture. The tourism office there, you know, so they're, they're all sort of intertwined now and trying to figure out how they can sort of marry that up. One of the recommendations here in the plan is to look at what's called equine legacy area that actually came from the Valley Planning Council to look more holistically at the equine industry in the county, which partly has, partially has a tourism element to it. So the executives already committed, that's not to say it shouldn't be in the plan in the long term, because the next executive could reverse all that. But there is a commitment already to focusing more attention in the agricultural community than what we've seen up to this point.
Because my, I don't want to be so concerned, but my, what I heard from the meetings where people were open to having access to those.
Well, as you know, bend breakfasts and use the word flour marks are two uses that are permitted in certain zones, agricultural zones now. But certainly if there's desire to have an amendment to that effect to strengthen the language, certainly that's something that.
Oh, yes, it is. We've highlighted, so actually, action two, three, and four kind of covered a variety of things you were discussing.
That is on a very high level.
We can work with you if you have some language that you have in mind.
Okay, I think what we need to do now is, other board members, do you have any questions right now? And then we have to decide how we're going to handle this. So we're going to take each, each issue and vote on it or, or where, how we want to move from there. So Mr. McGinnis, do you have a question?
Yeah. One of the problems we have in agriculture, we want to. What it's raised there and how your food and things are raised. But then the problem has been is people taking advantage of it and move to the next level and it becomes a commercial operation. So there is, they're still working on, with ag preservation, they're still working on rules on how to curb that. So I want to just answer that.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. And board members, please remember to turn on your mics when you speak and turn them off when you're finished. Questions, comments? Mr. Pearl.
Where did we end up? You hear in the red, but.
We have to vote on it. In other words, that's part of the things that we'll vote on. Exactly right. And somebody can make, we haven't made any motions, we haven't voted on anything. And. No, we haven't. I mean, I think people have their opinions of what they want to do. So you have to decide how much we're going to talk about it or how, when people want to make a motion for one way or another.
And I'd like to hear. I'd like to understand better.
I'm sorry, was that last comment that people think it's coming from the planning board? We had, we had absolutely no role in Councilman Mark's bill on the other day. We have heard repeatedly from the community concerns about the HUD process. When the HUDs first came into being, they were utilized in a way to be pretty creative with a lot of development. And therefore, the underlying land use became less relevant depending on the outcome of the development. One of the standards is it's supposed to be of a higher quality. What we've been seeing though is many of the developments mimic other developments. It's not, and we often, we always are pushing, say, you have to have a higher quality of the product because you're going outside what were the established bounds, if you will, by going where the zoning was not intended to be. Actually, there was conflict in the, between the zoning regulations and the code, which the council subsequently addressed by, because we were reading, it clearly is saying that you were bound by the underlying zoning as to what number of units you could construct. The councils changed that. But that's how we were interpreting the conflict between the code. And it said basically the zoning regulations would, would prevail. There's one HUD that's been, that's been approved over off of Rice's Town Road that basically is a bank. I don't think that HUDs were intended to create necessarily a single structure. That was not the intent of the HUD process, to eliminate the underlying zoning so you can build something else in one. And so that, that's been part of our concern. We have not, we're not convinced either that the council members have adequately taken into account county agency comments before they issued their final report. And so those are the kind of things that we would suggest have to be evaluated. Not trying to do away with HUDs because frankly, I think we need to see a lot more mixed use development in the county. We need to see some more creative development activities. And that means the underlying zoning has to be altered to drive it that way. Then I think that's what we have to take into account. See outcomes that we're looking at, but the process that we are hearing from a lot of people who participated in the process, community members, feel needs to be reexamined. So I'm not trying to kill, we're not trying to kill HUDs.
I would tell you that the community members generally become anti-developing as soon as they own their home. I would suggest to you that I think that there are very, a fairly substantial number of what I would consider much nicer communities that are HUDs and were approved as HUDs based on their construction and their both residential and commercial kinds of developments. I think the one you're talking about at Rice's Town Road at the Hook's Lane or Chase Bank is an absolute proper use for the property where it is on a commercial artery. I, I made the argument many times that commercial development on our major quarters has to be approved and redevelopment has to take place or we're going to be a very stagnant county in another twenty or thirty years.
Well, we may not disagree that that should be zoned for a bank, but not through the HUD process. That's, that's the point.
Especially if the councilman feels is the best process for him so that the neighborhood can comment on it. You know, we've got a, a psychic person next to that potential bank at that point that nobody thought it should be done, but it was zoned. So he ended up having one Rice's Town Road, something that is not conducive to commercial development in my mind, but that's where he is. I'm just concerned that the way that you revise the HUD structure and what just happened recently in the council is going to cause the growth of our county to become very stagnant. We, we've asked you all, you told us we have about four thousand lots available to develop in the county. And if we don't have the ability to take, if we can find land that can even be zoned properly, the way you're describing it, Steve, it's going to be very difficult to have any growth here in the county. Very concerned. I've lived here all but two years of my life, of my seventy years now, that this county is going to have problems paying its bills in the future if we don't have economic growth, whether that's residential, which is needed because of the affordability, as I've talked about. And I've talked about for years that that's important to me. When we can't rezone something that belongs to be an affordable housing project, that a church wants to have. And I've had those discussions recently again with council people. That's a major concern. So if they wanted to bring that in as a, giving the people the opportunity to discuss that and maybe still not, you know, getting their, their voices heard, if that's what you're trying to suggest. I think that it's really a concern for us to be making these changes. Again, especially with the ten year comprehensive rezoning, but even more so. I just think that we're going to need to take some of this land that's out there. And, you know, whether it's Lafarge or not, I mean, this is land. It can't be, you know, an industrial warehousing site. Then it needs to have a HUD that's going to allow it to be developed as residential. If that's the answer, sometimes if that's what the neighborhood people are going to be looking for. I understand it's a community, but, you know, I think that there's some thought that has to go into that. And I'm concerned that that's not going to be available to us going forward in this county. I spent my whole life in real estate, so it is a concern to me personally.
So what are you, what are you saying, Howard? We should just keep everything the same?
I don't say it should be the same, but I do think that, you know, I think it has worked. I think that I can name ten projects that have been well designed, new construction that I think, excuse me, Howard, that I've figured out from our book a long time ago, forty townhouses, and they don't look so great. Okay? At that point, but I can go look at Ballard Green and I can, I know the project, but I can look at Ballard Green and I can look at the quarry on Greenspring Avenue and see just a wonderful developments that have been done. And I'm sure there's another ten or fifteen I could name.
No, I'm trying to get us focused on the language that's in the master plan. So are we saying, and just broad overview, like are we all in agreement that it should stay? But it's up to us now to read and modify.
We put this document together and what we needed to do is decide are we going to go issue by issue and vote which way we want the language to go. Because honestly, I think, no disrespect to anybody, but we're, we've had these discussions. We all know it, but just the only way we get to the end. Do you want to do, do you want to take issues?
I think we need to have it, have a discussion then, and it could be a long discussion.
No, that's absolutely fine.
Yeah, well, but before we, I mean, I do think there's this fundamental, and it, and it's hard for me to think what the language is because I think it's, it does go back to, the master plan is, is saying that, or, you know, what, what we're, we're saying here, and I think it's absolutely right, that opportunities for new development within the Erdle are likely going to be redevelopment along the commercial corridors. So then the question is, does. So then the question is, does it have the right underlying zoning? Which is a zoning question, which isn't really touched. And if you're getting rid of the PUD process and we go to a 10-year, then the question is, is there some other mechanism, sort of what you were suggesting, some other jurisdictions? And/or should we be trying to redefine the zoning so that there's more flexibility in those zones? And that's not really discussed either. Anyway, so I'm not sure, this is where I'm not sure what happens. So you get some piece of some strip shopping center along one of the major quarters, some developer comes in and says they want to do something, but it doesn't have the right zone. Let's say it's two years from now. What's the process to change that? I'm not quite sure I understand what's being proposed versus, I mean, right now, it would be a PUD.
Let me give you one last example.
Okay.
And this is my kind of concern. So there's a Ramada Inn at Rice's Town Road at the Beltway. Okay, no residential housing around it, Target right next door.
There is residential housing right.
Behind the BP station that's there, but not.
Which is next door to the Ramada Inn.
I disagree, okay? The BP's along Rice's Town Road, a bowling alley, a Target, lots of things that are not. They've lived residentially there at that point. We don't want to have that argument. My point is, it didn't have AS. It had the zoning, but it didn't have AS. And one of the gas stations, Wawa, Royal Farm, whichever one you want to pick, would like to put a station there, okay? There was that discussion to have a Wawa on the other side or another gas station where the men's warehouse is and Freddie Brown's Jewelry Store, okay? To tear it down and put something there. I understand that people don't. And maybe we won't need gas in another 20 years because our governor passed a bill that says we'll have to have electric cars by 2035. That's a good thing, okay? I'm okay on that. But whatever the development might be, this is a major carter and it needs to happen. And it can't happen without a zoning cycle because the AS can only happen in the zoning cycle. And that's my concern of what we're going to do to our major carters, even if you want to do residential on an old shopping center, okay? They built it behind Foundry Road, there's 450 units there. You know how I pay attention to whether or not they're leased or not? I haven't called the developer, it's Avalon, but I look to see how many chairs are on their porches. And every time I drive by there, that's what I look at. How many of them have sitting chairs on their porch? And they're very substantially leased at this point. So people do want to live like that. But that's not available, again, without a zoning cycle and maybe without PUDs. So I'm very concerned about those two issues, what I'm focused on. Not all the little words and things that you all might do. I'm not a planner, I admit that. I look for my county to continue having economic growth. And that's what I'm trying to focus on.
So how do we proceed?
Well, Scott, I would say that I agree that I struggle with the same thing. I would love there to be a system where people could come on a monthly basis and apply for zoning. The community would go apoplectic, and it's not fair to the community. It's not fair to the community, they couldn't, they couldn't mobilize, they couldn't, so that.
The lawyers would do well. The lawyers would do fine.
I agree.
But that's not, so it's a balance between every month, which I'm fine with because I think the world is changing so quickly that we need to be, I think four years is too long personally. Four versus 10, it's like, what is the reasonable amount of that? And then we have to have some ability in that four-year cycle to make adjustments. Again, because the communities are, the needs of the community are going to change dramatically in that period of time. In a four-year cycle, the community, you know, it's going to change. The world's just changing so much faster than it did.
And I don't think we're disagreeing, I guess, the other, the other thought that we have not discussed, and what I was trying to raise, I know that there are lots of jurisdictions around the country that are basically saying they are getting rid of the single-family zoning, that they will allow some increase in density anywhere anybody wants to propose it. Which doesn't mean that's going to happen everywhere, but you at least have that ability. The question is, so that was sort of my question, some of these things. Can we provide some flexibility? So it's not rezoning, it's just that the zoning allows for a little more flexibility than what we currently have in some of these situations. That's a different way to, I think, get to the same place.
I think that's the problem that I see with this, is we'll meet for a gazillion hours. We'll recommend rezoning. The community will come out with certain councilmen and they'll say, we're not going to have any growth in our communities. And growth needs to be driven to other communities. And our, usually based on socioeconomic issues, the developments move down to those communities. So if it's not by right, then it's not going to happen. And that's how, that's how our system's set up as a county. So no one goes against councilmatic courtesy. So it just doesn't happen. And so as a county, as a board for the county, we need to think about that. And I would love that. I think that would be ideal if we could change the zoning for some strip centers to allow them to have multiple uses. But we tried that with the triple Cs and they were all turned down. Am I wrong on that? I don't think I'm wrong on that.
Right, zoning is comprised of zoning, not CZMP, I get that. So like, like Chairman Happer was saying, so if we go through and everybody's like, vote no on 10 years CZMP, great, then we stick with four years, right? But my other, kind of like Panera said too, like, so, but how do we move forward? Like, yes, I think we all understand everybody's opinions on certain sections. But unless we're going to actually suggest the planning board amend language specifically in certain sections, my understanding is zoning is underlying the master plan. So we're more talking about big picture, right? Is there specific language in the master plan that we're like, no, we want this out? Or we want to amend, or we want to add language about maybe your agritourism? I think that's maybe what we should focus on because, you know, we could all just vote no on CZMP, whatever the case may be, on how we feel. But maybe there's other discussions in the master plan we want that would help that conversation.
I agree 100%, but it drives.
We've got to clean the plate. We've got to get to the point where we say, like, Howard, if you'd like to make a motion that.
Yep, then let's start going through it and, you know, hopefully I'll be here for the PUDs and the CPRD for me to talk about.
May I have just a request? Can we add industrial to the commonly used definitions? I don't believe I saw that. Like, the commonly used terms, industrial is not listed. I was just wondering if I could get that definition added, please? I figured that was an easy thing to ask. That didn't require a discussion.
I'd like to comment on, okay.
Mr. Lafferty.
No, go ahead, go ahead. Say, on the amount of time between different changes, major changes, the average person who invests in a nice house and nice neighborhood, even a five-year or a four-year thing is pretty short for them to have to worry about some major development right next to them. So that's the reason that some are proposing a longer interim in between any major changes.
And I appreciate that. I, I'm, I hate to say I'm not worried about one individual, I'm not. And I don't think none of, no one on this board should, like, we have to look for the greater good. I presented a lot of data today that shows that we're running off a cliff at breakneck speed. And, you know, we have to think about that as a board, we have to think about that.
No, I just wanted to sort of step back and reestablish the context. This is a work session, not a voting session. That specific, you know, the intent is presumably next week. But if it's not next week, when the, when the board reconvenes to actually go through and offer specific amendments, it does, as Ms. Brophy said, require specific language, whether it's some agritourism or housing or, you know, changing what is in the document regarding CZMP or PUDs. That needs to come through as a specific amendment that we can then actually report and know exactly what the text and language is. So that certainly is one of the next steps, not in chair. Well, I guess, to your comments and Mr. Perlow's, yes, it is, it's your document. But the question is, what changes do you make to the document you have in front of you? And if you, but you need to have a process by which the majority of you say, this is a change that we want in the document. And so whether it's hand vote or an eye vote or something, but then we need to have the specific language that you either want to strike or you want to add so we know what goes into the document that's in front of you. And if it simply strikes all references to changing the CZMP, that is, that's a motion then that has to be agreed to by a majority of the people.
But wouldn't we have the option to just rewrite the whole document? I mean, it's not what we want to do, but that would be an option that we would have to do that. I don't want to do that, but I'm just saying, no, I mean, seriously, I mean, to Howard's point.
You do have, sure, I mean, the whole document is for you to either accept.
But we want to amend it, but it should be a working session where we work on it. And I appreciate it, Chairman, and I don't mean to talk over you, but I'm not a planner, so I may not have the proper wordage of the language. The staff is here to help us with that. So we can talk about what we want in there and then they can put it in the proper language that supports what we want to have happen.
We need to ensure we accurately reflect what it is we want. And unless you're able to articulate what you want, we don't, I don't want to go back to sort of what Mr. Perlow was suggesting, that it's all come from the planning staff. This has got to come from you. And if you say, I want a statement in there that says, the county shouldn't invest resources to promote agritourism, that's the language, not leaving it to the staff to say, make up something on agritourism. You know, that's what we need to turn to you. We can help you wordsmith it, but, you know, we need to know where you want to go with the request.
That's what I'm asking.
Sure.
I would love to have a ballgame. Actually, that is not, that is not, not a group of politicians. You can talk about, ask people, we're back, let's talk about what part of that.
And Mr. Warren, this is, this document has been available since April 3rd for commentary. And we would welcome, we would have welcomed that comment earlier so we could have then gone to Mr. Lippincott's work and dug out what you were looking for. And we can still do that.
Oh. Go line by line and then we have the planning board, the planning staff to help with the coverage.
Okay, all right.
Can I ask?
Go ahead.
This is just procedural. The documents that you guys handed us today, so this is sort of a non-mappy version of what it was and the highlights are the changes that, based on the comments that we've already had. Right, so if we were just to go through this, that would give us sort of a first pass of some of the issues. Double checking.
That's correct. That's, that was just, you know, just the straight text in a Word document that would give you an opportunity just to see it, if you were going to make amendments to it, kind of where it falls within the content of that section, just to give you a little tool to use when looking at that. Right. Right, so some of that needs to be collapsed for the next go-round.
Plan has been publicly since the 3rd of April. So it's simply, it's yellow. And you can see, and those are the changes that were discussed last week. Those are exactly the same changes that we were discussing and reflected in the chart.
Well, you can't vote tonight, tonight was not advertised as a voting meeting.
Why doesn't everybody go over the changes privately, at home? And then, but since we cannot vote this evening, we have to come back next week and vote anyway. So everybody takes some time, go over the changes that have been made. Not everything has been changed. Think about what you want to change, amend whatever we want to say, and then we vote on that line by line next week. And we're not voting tonight, so that's, we know that. It might be two votes.
I have a few questions.
Oh, don't be sorry.
One, I heard today that as members of the planning board, there is a discussion that the county council has approved a must.
You left the room when that discussion was.
No, they.
You were on the phone when we were talking about that.
They've not, that's not happened. Mr. Perlow, the bill's been introduced and no decision's been made by the council.
Possibly have problems, you know, getting to serve because I won't be able to say that I'm not vested in some point. It's a volunteer position, that's why I sometimes think that I can talk whether somebody else in the county might not want me to. The money isn't that important to me. I know other counties pay substantially more than that. You know, if you all want to know the number without telling you outside of here, that's a concern. I would ask for a point of personal privilege, if that's Robert's rules, if that's the right one, that I will not be here next Thursday night. I will be on the plane to the trail for our Metzbo. I would ask that, I would like to discuss the PUD and CPRD tonight.
Okay.
And have that discussion.
Oh, absolutely.
Whether I can vote or not, at least to have my discussions, my feelings really heard, I would say a little bit.
I think that's one of the major issues with everybody on the board here.
Yes, what section should we be referring to then, the one group with the PUD stuff?
It would probably be easiest, and this is easiest for my brain, I don't know it for your brain, but if you look at the growth framework piece here, that's the word, the full Word document is just text, on page 15, that's where the CZMP process section starts. And then the PUD is after that in, in, starting on page 17. And the proposed language that we got last time is still on the chart. So if you wanted to go back and look at that, you could see that.
And I know I kind of mentioned this before, so, and I know Director Lafferty mentioned it. So my thing is, I do feel that the dynamics of demographics and the communities do change more often than every 10 years. So if we're just going on, working with a framework, I mean, I would basically strike the language that moves the comprehensive zoning map process to 10 years instead of four years in whatever sections. I mean, obviously, we're not voting on it. That's just where I would start the discussion is that unless we review underlying cycle zoning processes and other ways to go about off-cycle zoning changes, as other board members have mentioned, I would strike all language in the plan that has it shifted to 10 years. So that would be what I would suggest to you guys, and then we can vote on it next time.
I agree. 10 years should absolutely be stricken. The rezoning is paramount to redevelopment. And if we go every 10 years, it's going to completely destroy redevelopment. Anyone who works in commercial real estate, anybody who has anything to do with commercial real estate at all, it, to wait 10 years will just be absolutely crushing to the development community.
Would you consider six years?
So, and that's why I said, I'm, I'm not saying like I'm dead set on four years. I don't really know how that four years was set, right, Ms. Wolfson? Because others are six, eight, whatever. Mine's more just if there's no underlying process in between those years, that's my concern. I don't know if we can change language of the off-cycle in this master plan, what we're specifically talking about now, but that's my suggestion, is that if it's only from four to 10, and that's our choices here, I would say no.
I think four makes a lot of sense in this scenario because council members serve in four-year terms. You're giving, there's no guarantee that any particular council member gets a chance to serve again. They have to run for reelection. I think the opportunity for each one of them, and CZMP being one of their biggest opportunities to make an impact on their community as a council person, gives them the, a bite at the apple, as it were, that they're not guaranteed to get outside of four years. So I think that's a big deal.
I think that's a good answer, because I was wondering, how come not five or half of the 20, but four is, makes a sense, is why it's set at four.
Mr. Hillefke, do you have anything to add to that?
I absolutely believe it should be four years. I think that six and eight just takes too long and just causes delays of projects that then need six or eight years. I would say to you, Mr. Lafferty, if you would like us to, as a board, consider a motion to ask the county executive now and in the future to make sure your budget carries enough weight, because I read the paragraph here where the possibility of a streamlined workflow is difficult. I understand that. If you need more staff, I'll see as a member of the planning board that the planning department has enough staff to do it every four years if it has caused those issues, which I understand that again, I see how much work it is. I see the meetings that we all have as volunteers, maybe not someday, but right now, I just think that it's, it's the proper timeframe. I think Steve's comments as to the council, if they really mess it up, the councilman, when they're elected, they will be out of office the next time by the voters in that district if they've really screwed up the zoning in their district.
So we want to.
Yeah, I would like, I think we should strike both the CZMP and the PUD changes from the plan.
Let's, let's do the.
Let's just do the CZMP.
CZMP, I think we should focus our energy around redevelopment inside the rural.
Okay, but we're going to handle the CZMP issue first, and then we'll move on to something else. Now, you've got three examples here. Is there any specific language you'd like to use? One from Ms. Brophy, one from Ms. Panero, and one from Mr. Hillefke. But. Well.
I do like the informational page seven, the red, with the frequency of CZMP. Council should have ability to make updates to the master plan as needed to keep pace with changing needs. I don't know whether that might be a bill someday that they do that might allow some spot zoning if it's needed. You know, if you not want to have a foundry row happen, if it was really good for the county and they needed one little piece in the middle done. So I think giving the council some ability to come back and do certain things, that gives you some flexibility in between the four years.
Now, does everybody understand what you just said?
I may, Mr. Perlow. That's, those are two different things, because the council can amend the master plan anytime they want, right now. And they have, that's when you adopt a community plan, it becomes an amendment to the master plan, for instance. The land preservation plan that the board endorsed was adopted by the council as an amendment to the master plan. So they're currently able to, they're not changing the zoning. They are changing the master plan, which is, Mr. Lipp, as I said earlier, it's not a zoning document. But I mean, I'm saying it shouldn't, not saying it shouldn't be inserted, I'm just saying that they currently have that authority.
Any questions? So how, Steve, can we? We're not voting on it, but don't we have to give, give them some language? We want to see when we're ready to vote on it. That's what we're here to do. We're not voting on it, but we're just saying. Just explains it.
No, it's just, I think they're just saying we're going to strike the language.
We're not really, we're not really making recommendations.
Can't have a vote today.
Yes.
The consensus of this board is that directs them to change the language and vote on it whenever.
Okay, let's, let's go around the room and let's just take a consensus. How do, do you want it four or 10 or something else? Four, 10 or something, you just rate.
I've said it like five times, I want it to go back to the regional.
Okay, that's all you need to hear. Mr. Perlow. Ms. Brophy, four years. Mr.?
I am. I, I think we should be silent on it. I, I think we ought to take out the 10 years, yes.
Okay.
But I'm not willing to say that it should stay four years. I think it's a bigger picture issue that's outside the master plan. I think we should allow some opportunity for the planning department to look at alternative ways to streamline the development process. And if we could put language in there to that effect, we don't, we're not saying it's four years or 10 years. We're just open to the opportunity to streamline the development process.
Okay, what it puts you down is something, something different. And then just see.
I guess I gotta, I gotta, I need to draft language to that effect, correct? Gotcha.
Mr. McGinnis.
Four.
Ms. Wolfson.
Six.
Mr. Hillefke.
Four, based on the number that's taken from the counties average, four.
Ms. Panero.
Four.
Well, eight people have gone for four. So I think.
I wish I had all of them. And I, I think my message was eight, not multiple. I, I think we should be silent. I think we should go back to what it was originally.
That's, that's fine.
Yeah, I don't know that we need to talk about it. It wasn't in there, so.
No, no, so it's more you would just strike the current, just strike whatever language is currently in, moving it from four to 10, which we will vote on next time, but that would be our suggestion, right? It's like we would just strike all the four to 10 language. And then it becomes silent.
And I would like to add language that promotes looking at it and studying it further to.
I support that.
Yeah, and I, I could draft some language, but if everybody's intent on keeping it at four for the next 10 years.
Well, in the, the current one, there is, it doesn't say four, does it?
In the master plan right now.
Right, 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 right. It's 2020, in 2020.
Oh, in 2020.
Yeah, that's it.
I don't know what it says.
What we're saying, just to piggyback on what you're saying, is just strike it. I'm okay with putting some language in the plan that said, how you weigh.
Right.
How we make the process more seamless or.
Efficient.
Efficient, that's fine. But I don't, I don't want any of the CZMP information, just strike it and just put that on.
All right, are we going to take another vote? Okay, so we're good with that. All right, everybody good with that? All right.
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to circulate it before the next meeting.
Great. All right, well, that was easy. Pardon, how many other issues do we have here?
Well, I think Mr. Perlow also wanted to talk about the PUDs, too. Is that also in this section?
Next.
Okay, perfect.
Look on page. Page 17 of the document just with text. Page 10 of the chart.
17, page 17. Oh, on the chart?
Page 10.
I don't have numbers anymore. So if I'm reading this correctly, I think I'm the first person to propose anything, and similar to what we just discussed, just the PUD process, process remains the same.
I would like to see that. We all want to look into it and take four years to, you know, look at it and to discuss it and see ideas, if that's what we, really our job is, is the planning board, okay, to direct the planning department to really come back with it. I feel that the PUDs have worked for the last 15 years. I've seen major discussions at the hearings. I see everybody not agreeing, ultimately coming down to the council person that they elected to decide whether to introduce the PUD. Is their councilmatic privilege that they pretty much approve it? And disapprove it as a group, as seven, that's what they do. And maybe there's a better way than that. But I do feel that there are many very successful plan unit developments in our county that have been accepted as great projects until the people or somebody, somebody moves in. I don't want to make it just residential, because there are some very successful PUDs down in Grove and on Valley and others at that.
And, and I don't disagree with what Mr. Lafferty said earlier, that they should be creative. But that's part of the PUD process, is the creativity of those involved, the developers involved, and also with the input from the community. So it gives people, you know, everybody gets involved with that, with that process.
I remember when we looked at the Liberty Road stuff and all. Sounds great, okay? Looks wonderful. Show me when it gets done, okay? So that's what I see, whether planning staff or if it has to be brought to us to review pictures of something, get it done. If that's what our job is, the planning board, if they're going to pay us now to make that decision, you know, that's not a bad thing then at that point. And if we say no to it, because we're the planning board and we want changes, the city does that with their architectural committee all the time in their apartment houses. Every architect knows, I was with one this morning, he knows he's going to get kicked back every time he comes in the first time. So somebody's looking at that. And if it's not us, if it's another board, I can't answer that, but to review it and look at it. But I don't want to see major changes to it that ruin the PUD process without really investigating.
So, just to be clear, so what's in the current draft of the master plan? It sounds like exactly what we're talking about. I mean, what it says is, the PUD process should be reviewed comprehensively along with the impacts of the admission of the planning board and the approval process. A PUD task force should be created to study existing processes and make recommendations to make it easier for retrofitting communities as suggested in the growth, growth framework. So at the moment, I'm not seeing anything in the proposal that changes the PUD in the fact that it sounds like exactly what we've all just been talking about.
I'd like to see it be silent, too.
You don't want to, don't want to look into the.
I don't know if it belongs in the master plan, that's, I guess, my concern. You know, I think that if we, as the planning board, wanted to come back after you approved the, whenever of the master plan, and want us to make a suggestion to the planning staff that we'd like to, I don't know, that we need the council's permission to direct the planning staff that we would like to look at it, not just look at our own, but again, investigate other parts of the country that, you know, look, I've always said Bully Rock up in Hartford County is just an unbelievably wonderful development. Golf course, clubhouse, pools, everything that you want to see in a PUD. And 2,000 units. I don't think we have a 2,000 unit PUD in Baltimore County. But maybe we do need that, maybe that is a great senior kind of project to live in. You go up into Pennsylvania now, and you see all of these senior projects. There's one in Amberbrook, we're doing a lot of settlements in now. So maybe that is a good thing that we should be looking at it and saying, that's what we need for our seniors. Maybe it is a high rise, you know, for seniors, maybe it is someplace, I don't know where the land is, but why are they doing it in Pennsylvania? Because the land is available, is the question. So I, I don't know that I want to see it part of the master plan, but I do believe that we should be maybe looking at it and coming up with some alternatives. That's what we think is probably.
I guess it's not clear as to why you don't want it in there. I mean, why, why we want to take it out. I mean, I'm not sounding against it, I'm just trying to understand why you want to take it out.
Just don't know that it belongs in the master plan. I just think that, you know, you're saying that there's a problem with the PUDs and we need to evaluate it, we might. But I don't think that it's something that we should be looking at only for seven more years now, since it's already 2023, and this is 2030's plan. I just don't know, you know, that I want to see that be a focus of somebody that has, that the, the master plan says that we should have looked at the, at the PUDs. I want that to be used against getting rid of PUDs or, you know, changing it very substantially without us having the ability to look at it.
But PUDs are part of the development process, and that's what this section is talking about, the different pieces of the process. And to me, the language is pretty benign. I mean, if it's, it is part of all what we're talking about, the PUDs and the CZMP are all part of looking the process. So if we want to say, we want to look at it and see if there's ways we can improve on it, I'm okay with that. And I think that's what this says.
Well, I'm not sure that it's saying that the planning board should look at it. The, the master plan is the county's master plan. It might give councilmen, they passed a bill without any discussion with us at all, saying that they can now cancel PUDs, okay? There's no discussion here. And I just don't know that I want to give them in this the opportunity to say that they're going to change it, rather than the job they've given us to do.
Well, can we limit it to the planning board? Will the planning department and the planning board may, may look into making things more efficient?
Yeah, the challenge I have with this is we see a lot, we've been on the board for a long time, what ends up happening is the community uses the need to go to court. And then we made a decision on a zoning issue. They bring it back to us and they say it doesn't fit the plan. And we vote on the same thing over again that we had already approved.
We vote on the same thing over again that we had already approved. You just have to be careful. That's why I just want to.
Yeah, I get you, I get.
It just, it, that's probably my biggest issue with it. My biggest annoyance is that I re-vote on something that I had already approved, you know, over and over again. And you have to have certainty for, I don't know, just because of them being on the PUD that's already started on, that's going to be a big flaw. But from a, from a banker standpoint, if I could lend money and invested in a project and change that PUD. I'm just, I'm sorry, I, I don't know if I could lend money on something that's not a PUD.
But, but considering the commonality of PUDs today, and they've been around since what, two thousand, two thousand and four?
I think that you can't.
So now this is the third master plan since, you know, we've had twenty, two thousand, two thousand and ten, two thousand and twenty, now two thousand and thirty. Don't you think that the PUD should be exposed to the same goals as the master plan?
I think not. Well, disagree with me, but I think not. I think that the PUD allows the county to allow growth if the council and the constituents in that community want it. Again, they can get rid of their councilmen if they may, I think that, I don't.
Well, and people purchase property based on, and, and not just purchase property, but also live on property, whether they rented, whether they purchased it, considering their underlying zoning. And the PUD changes the underlying zoning. So at least they can have the assurance that it should meet the goals of the master plan.
I would argue the, the other.
I'm sure you would.
You, you have, you have people that bought property in its downsides. And you, you intentionally stole their value. You've taken value by doing that. That happens in our process. Hori has brought the value of all the condominiums across the street up substantially to the six, seven hundred thousand dollar range because it's been so successful, a community. And there's others the same way.
I don't disagree with it, but I do believe it should be exposed to the goals of the master plan.
Okay, I think this is what we. Oh, people feel, I think we need to go around and check everybody's pulse. I know you're all live, but Mr. A, Ray, how are you feeling?
I agree, I agree with Kathy, she should be a part.
Okay.
But is the question that, or, I mean, right now, the language in the master plan is if there should be some sort of task force. Are we, but I'm not sure, they're saying strike the whole language.
But what if we say the planning board is a task force? So you're, you're suggesting potentially maybe we amend the language rather than completely strike the language, right? So if there's like certain amended language that you guys might want to see next time, you can do that, or we can vote next time to strike it.
What that is saying though, so the community's going to have input, the council person's going to have input, all that's going to happen. It's going to come back to us and we're going to modify that.
No, no, I think all this is saying right now is that we should have some sort of larger discussion, larger discussion about what this process is. I don't think it's changing anything, any of the process, any of the current process at all.
I can live, I can live with it if it comes back, that the planning board is in charge of that, so to speak. And the decision will be made by the planning board, not by the county council. Okay, I mean, I'm just trying to take it out of their hands at this point because I'm not happy with what they did here without a discussion with us. Are we just not useful at all or not? That's what I'm looking for, is that they don't have the ability to continue to change it and get rid of it without us. And it might be a year project, I can't tell you what it will be.
Could be longer, yeah.
It's, it's going to be a football that, that the community's going to. So then that's what our job is supposed to be, is to give these council people their, their cover. And we'll take on the responsibility of having the hearings, if that's what it is, not, and it might not be till after zoning's done, but maybe the following year. We make that a project for us as a planning board. So do we, do we hold up at all PUDs until we have a meeting?
No.
So I, this language is saying that we have to look at it. So I can tell you what the community is going to say, that we, they're going to read that, is that we, if we write it that way, that we have to evaluate every PUD that's approved. I'm just telling you, that's how it's going to happen. That's how it's going to come down. It's going to go to the court, the court's going to send it back to the planning board because it's the, the master plan, which is what happens with all these developments, to say they're not within the right transect or whatever. And we have to vote on those every time. I'm just, that's what's going to happen.
Okay, but the thing is.
So it's going to slow the process down for every development.
Maybe the board feels comfortable about it as a whole, so we should ask from everybody that's here how you feel about that. That we make it where the planning board is the source of the process.
But do we have the ability to do that? I mean, can they, I, I thought you said that the council has the ability to change it if they want.
They can, but they always can.
Yeah, but I mean, so.
I mean, the process we can manage, each individual project, we can.
Sure, I think what I'm, what I think what I'm hearing, I may be wrong, is that basically we could change the language that says the planning board should study the existing procedures and process. So instead of just saying create a task force to Mr. Perlo's point, it's that the planning board sort of owns the study of the process. And this was intended to look at the process, not to review any given specific PUD. The planning department does that now in our normal course of development review. We look at PUD applications. And those don't come up to the planning board. Now, if the planning board wants to say, we want to go back to where it was initially, which is the planning board has review and the council took away in two thousand and ten, that's, the board could make that recommendation, but again.
I don't think that I'm necessarily looking for us to, to PUDs, okay? Us to be able to look at this, and it's not the council, I hate to use the word, I'll get yelled at by a few of them, I'm sure, dictating to them that they can't pass what they just did, okay, without some discussion. I think that that's very unfair to the business community, I'm going to say, okay? And I think that's what's got the concern, so I want to know that it's our parameters to look at it. They then will have the chance to bless it, they have to bless everything that we do. But I think that I want it to come from us and not a review by the, by the council first, that's what I'm.
So how, what is the, what frequency?
I think we're going to look at it in the next, in a couple of years. I can't tell you with zoning that they're going to have time to do it until that's finished. But I think that it leaves it for us to begin an investigation, a task force, and it might mean some additional hearings you know, a year from now or a year and a half from now to look at the PUD process. There could be better things that we could add to the PUD process, not always negative, okay? Maybe there are some things, and I, I just feel that we'll hear from the community on all sides. And then hopefully we can look at it, and it's maybe because it's one issue then, not this whole master plan that we're trying to get approved, but it's one issue that we can now have a, a major review of. And Kathy, if you think there's things wrong with it, then we'll bring it up, you know, at that point, and we'll discuss it.
So from time to time, have you need arises?
I think we're looking at it one time to do it now, and if they want to bring it back up in twenty thirty again and look at it another time, you know, twenty forty, whatever. We'll look at it, I won't be here.
All right, let's, let's see if we can come up with something that everybody feels comfortable with, Mr. Ruffey.
So it could just be amended language, right? So right now it says the plan unit development process needs to be evaluated for transparency, clear articulation of eligibility requirements, community benefits, and ensuring a higher quality development achieved at project. And it could just say like by the planning board, right? Like at the end, I'm just making the suggestion for next time, obviously, you know, we can talk about it if you're not going to be here. But it also talks about TODs, right? Transit oriented development is also a huge part of the county's initiatives. And it also says that those need to be clearly specified. So this whole paragraph could really just be amended by adding like by the planning board, right? And it's not by a certain frequency, as Mr. Ari says, just in this master plan, in this big picture of twenty thirty, the planning board with community feedback, of course, right? And, and planning staff help and everything, will review the PUD and.
Well, we currently do not have a definition for TOD in our own code, although we've talked about that and actually been working on that. The designation itself does come from the state. It's a state designation. Well, the zoning at Metro Center, for instance, permits that, that mix of uses, which is what TODs are driven to do. So you, you know, people get off the light rail, heavy rail, buses, whatever, and you're living or working in that environment. Well, no, no, it's sort of the other way around. You need to have the zoning in order to be eligible to be designated as a TOD. For instance, we had a TOD designation over on the east side of Aviation Station. And when the new owners came in, basically said this is going to be industrial manufacturing, that was no longer, that, that was not going to drive a TOD. So that, we actually mutually agreed to withdraw that designation. It's growth framework six. Seven, I mean, seven.
Right, the recommendation for this piece is on page twenty, where it references the vision frameworks, the built environment section, goal one, action two. Evaluate the current PUD process to ensure it's transparent. And that would be where, by the planning board, would go in there somewhere.
Oh, we could just change.
Planning board.
The planning, the planning board should study. You say the planning board should study, and then. The planes, well, wordsmith. Okay, we can, we can, what we can say is evaluate the successes and eligibility and some of those other things. That will be up to the planning board to set that parameter when we finally study it. Madam Chair, if I may, I mean, there may be some middle ground here. Really, the links were added or included to provide additional information if people wanted to drill down further into a specific issue or definitions and things of this nature. But a substantial number of the links are from federal, state, or local government. And we also have a link, for instance, to sustainable places, which is the basis for this plan structure. We have a, a link to LEED, which is the U.S. Green Building Code, and that's the LEED standard. So we have like different, if you will, categories of links that are in this document. And I don't, my own personal thought is if it comes, not that we're from the government and we're here to help you, but you know, if it comes from federal EPA, if it comes from Baltimore County, if it comes from the state of Maryland, then those have a different status maybe. And eliminating all links is not necessarily the best way to proceed. We may be able to cite some of the other links in a different way in the document, but not, you know, it's not going to get to the hacking issue that Mr. Perlo raised, but you know, people could hack any document in, we have these challenges all the time in, in county government, even though we have a terrific security system. So it may be that we could stratify the links in that way, because I think we have to have a link to the APA, American Planning Association, sustaining places, because that's, people say, well, what the heck does all that mean, you know, unless we're going to summarize it entirely within the document, which is not viable. We, we could have a disclaimer in there that says something to that effect, and we could, sure. But if it changes every four years and the standards for silver are something embedded in the master plan, that if it changes, that's still what we have to adhere to. And that's, that's the premise. Okay? Welcome back.
Would the disclaimer not just cover it as a blanket statement in the beginning?
I mean, we can have it both ways. I mean, you could vote this as a disclaimer, and if it doesn't pass, you could go on it as, with the reference page too. For a disclaimer. Yes. Madam Chair, we will need to advertise one way or the other. So if it's a voting session, we will need to advertise it that way. If it's not a voting session, then obviously we. I, I guess, I mean, I guess you could schedule for a voting session and actually basically table the vote until the following meeting, which I think we had discussed before, would be the 29th. You could probably have votes, or you could probably have, you could have votes over two sessions probably, as long as, again, we have to advertise them, both of them, as voting sessions, so the public knows. We, we, I'll speak for the staff, you know, we appreciate the dialogue. You know, it's, this is important, it's a very important business for the board. And yes, the staff has, I think, done some really overtime efforts to bring the information to you and glad if it helps better inform the vote and makes a better document. We'll, tomorrow, when we'll advertise. Right, because that's, unfortunately, it's less than a week, but that's as soon as we can do it. Then we would have basically two weeks of notice for people to, I don't know, I don't know. Can the vote, well, I guess that's a question, Madam Chair, is, is it, will you, will you hold votes? Is advertised as a tentative vote, but we'd like, we'd like to be more definitive. Will there be votes taken next week?
If you know where the Congress is, they're going to be the board, they'll, at work section, it's, and, 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 and.
I, I had an exchange with the administrative officer today, and she said things got moving, this has been in discussion for a while, and while I knew that there was some discussion about doing this, it just sort of dropped real quickly, and she was very apologetic for not having a chance to talk to me or talk with the board members about this. I don't know that she controlled the timing of when the chairman was going to drop the bill. I mean, it came from the administration, but I don't, the bill actually says that effective July 1 is when the money would be available for salaries or for, for payment for compensation. So that's, you know, right around the corner, and I'm not sure how the timing worked out, Well, yeah, and I, you know, there's, like I said, the bill just got introduced, so I don't know if there's conflicts of interest issues, I don't know if there's ethical issues for, for any individual or collectively, or the right to refuse to accept, I mean, I, or, like I said earlier, any impact on your financial disclosures, which probably puts you in a different category than what you currently have to file. So those things, I just don't know, and I can try and find out as much as I can and share with all of you. They, that's what the bill says, effective July 1. Well, they, they, the bill says it would be available July 1, doesn't mean that it would be, you'd get a check on July 2. But, I mean, I, I just, I don't know, I don't know an answer. It initially started because the Police Accountability Board and requests from the executive to compensate those members, and so they looked at, started looking at, they were asked then to look at other boards and commissions, because there was concern by a couple of council members that, well, why just them and not everybody else? Because everybody else is working hard too. And that's when they did this benchmarking across jurisdictions and found that we're basically on par with all the others except for the planning board. I think, I think the work session is on the 25th, I believe, and then the vote would Thank you.